Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
In December that they did the second round, Gary Witt together with the application. We submitted it back through this is an SBA grant, actually I think it was SBA if I remember correctly. And we were notified that we were eligible for the second round and that was the number that they told us we would be eligible for for additional Shuttered Venue Operating Grant Funds, so that's where we put that.
But I'm looking at transfers line, the second line down says transfer, seventy-two thousand.
Right, that's going to be transfers in because it's going to come from the shuttered venue.
Oh, okay, well.
It should probably, they could put a little bit more information on that just so that you can, but that's where that would come from.
Question?
Yes.
The five hundred thousand dollars of FEMA money, I saw the article in the reformer yesterday. That we've been running into some difficulties or just delays in negotiating that?
Well, our person, because everybody gets assigned a project person on each disaster event and the person that we've been working with, we had a couple of meetings with her prior to the holiday, she was off on vacation. She was scheduled to come in tomorrow to do, to do follow up on all of our, all of our expenses and get, get us to a final number. She's in isolation at the moment, so we're going to do it tomorrow by Zoom. So, we're still hopeful that we can get that done. Once that's done, then it's just a question of going through the federal reviews, it goes through the state, then it goes to the feds. And then it's unknown as to when we're actually going to receive the money. So, we asked the auditor, should we credit that money or potentially recognize that revenue? And they said, really shouldn't, you should wait until you receive it and then use it as a, you know, once you receive the money, then you can obviously program it.
So, are you including it in the next year's budget as a sort of a deficit to figure this year, how's that going to work?
You'll see that we'll have some additional spending just because we paid contractors and done some other work in highway. And then, once we get that money back in, we'll be able to then replenish those funds. So, you'll see those being restored. Then we'll have some additional monies that have come in, that will be money that had been spent on things like overtime and some of the other administrative support which is eligible for reimbursement. Those monies will be new revenue in the budget here. We've already been, you know, it was an expense, so we'll see what we can do with that. So, when it's all said and done, there will be some additional cash flow from that. We just don't have a little bit sense of when that's going to happen.
So, at the moment, we're just tapping into our fund balance to cover all those costs.
We're just covering it to the, to the operating budget and if we're over on an account line, we'll ultimately have to cover that too. We're not doing too badly in the current year, so.
Yeah, but our current year's kind of completed because of that seven, five hundred thousand.
It's gonna, it's gonna reflect sooner or later, right?
So, have those all, those expenses all been paid at this point?
All the contractors have been paid, you know, all the gravel that we, that we hauled, all those, the restoration of the roads. And the state actually charged us for the use of some of their vehicles, so everybody's been paid. So, the expenses have all been recognized. Once we get the project where she's approved from FEMA, it goes through that process and I can give you a real number.
So, we're going to get any mitigation, I know we've been talking about mitigation, because we've got COVID on that, especially on Lee Road.
Mitigation is a separate number outside of what's already been done, right? So, then we're going to meet with them and try to get some additional monies and some projects. And that's definitely something we're going to resize some of those COVIDs.
Okay, page fourteen under development, there's planning, so downtown planning expenses, is that for something, or in regard for a grant or something, or?
That was, let's catch up. Gary, you want to explain that because that was the joint?
So, the Planning Commission and the Development Office are sharing some reporting project. When we were looking at the development chapter for the new town plan, the Planning Commission really wanted to see some, some current, robust economic data in an annual report type format that would be useful for decision making and looking at. And so, in previous years, the Planning Commission had used ten thousand dollars for other items. So, they asked if we could split it to five thousand dollars economic development and five thousand dollars planning and do that type of economic data in the annual report. And I think, I think that Alyssa took it out of the, of that, of the development front, the downtown planning and put it into the economic development in general front.
I know it showed up two different places, but I didn't cross yet. Page twenty, Meeting House Fund, there's nothing there, I assume that's waiting, we're waiting on the result of the vote on town meeting?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. And I'd say building reserves, we're not going to do that for fifty, we'll leave it at forty?
Well, that's what was in the last item that was the original, the original article that we were using, it started in forty. So, the board wants to change it to fifty, we can, and we just went back to the original. So, it's up, you know, certainly that's, that's an item that we can extend, it's just, we went back to the original. Bridge reserve?
I was going to there too, but couldn't pick that up. I don't know if that, there's one item there that says reserves for a hundred thousand, is that where you dumped that into, Scott?
Where are you looking at here?
I have, I'm still going ahead, trying to find it with the page number so you guys can find it here.
Not put additional monies into the bridges or for proposed budget. Some of that being that we're out an additional eighteen, twenty-four months now based on the construction schedule for that project. So, that was a concern that, I know we want to build that up at a time. Still trying to figure out where we're going to be with the project itself in terms of how much money they're, they're actually going to be asking for. So, I keep asking the H B if they can come back and give us a sixty percent planned set update, and they're not ready yet. So, I really want the board to be able to see that, understand in more detail. More than the schematics that we looked at with the parking lot, some of the others, she kind of critical, some return rates and some of the sidewalk impacts and make sure, as well as the placement of the best rim bridge. So, there's some critical items that, that I think was important enough to have them come back and do just an updated presentation before they go to a final design. I think the board wants to make sure that we're on the same page. If H B's been good, they've just been a little bit, it takes them a while to get through their design process.
Yeah, I think we can, once we get a sense with the finances that where everything irons out, we will know, have a better sense of our fund balance. And we can always move money from the fund balance into that particular, instead of hitting, right now we'll be hitting the taxpayers.
Correct. It seemed a little premature to do that, but certainly if that's the board's interest, we could certainly do that.
I mean, I'd rather wait till we figure out what happens with FEMA and, I mean, there will be ideally some funds available in our fund balance.
Yes, they're definitely, yeah.
Scott, I was looking at what I would consider dramatic increases in some accounts. One of them is software on page nine, toward the third one up at the bottom. There's a blank under the budget and it was twenty-five hundred dollars in FY twenty-one, but it's going to be six times that in the next year. What's that about?
Most of that relates to required state licensing. There's also a, we also have a state, we're required to run a registration program for all of our vehicles for the state. That's going to have some licensing and software, because they've changed that program, so some of that money is included in there. A lot of it is land use records from the ethlings renewals, that's also in there. I think there was one other one that had changed from a previous year to that, to this project.
Software that was making it easier for people to see online the records, right? Wasn't there an increase in that?
Correct. So, all of those basically, Rick, are all statewide program requirements? These aren't anything that we're doing, you know, unique, it's just part of that process.
Are those one-time fees for the license?
Most of those are just because of changes and updates, so they should go back to a regular, normal pattern.
Right.
Once you get through that update.
The, on page eleven, the fuel number that seems to stay the same, given the increase of cost of fuel, I'm wondering if that's an accurate number?
We worked on that with, with Andy a little bit and, and the reality of it is, is that, that, that change is really based on what we're doing in relationship to just our winter activities and just our general, how much, how, how active the trucks are through the course of the year. So, we looked at it and we decided, the cost of fuel's going up, but it didn't go up enough to where we thought that was going to dramatically affect what we're doing. So, I think we're fairly comfortable with that number. If we, if we see another twenty or thirty percent increase, then I think we'll all be a little bit uncomfortable with that number. But I don't, I don't, hopefully we won't see that as we get into the spring, so.
Yeah, but this, I think it's heating fuel. The town hall heating.
The electrical problems somewhere.
Okay, let's increase that one.
That was about the fuel, that was a warning.
Now, on page, on page twelve, Scott, and we've talked about this a little bit, that the labor that recycling has gone up by sixty percent in one year from sixty thousand, at least from seventy-six to ninety-six. And the question is, is are we overstaffed? And my gauge of that is when I pull in there and I see if there's a line or not. If the only thing that affects the line are the two people in the, in the recycling, that's, that's the, I never see lines in the scales or the trash disposal. So, I'm wondering, could we, is there any way we could reduce that number, it's a pretty whopping increase?
Well, some of that is, I sent an email to Rick and said, some of that is we had to upgrade our pay because we just had another increase in minimum wage. So, that's reflecting those changes.
Right.
We were paying below that rate. The other factor in that is, I think, when we had less staff, we had certainly a much more, the grounds were not as well maintained or not as pleasant because we just didn't have enough staff to watch what was happening. So, we were ending up with piles, we're ending up with various points in time where I know people stacked up into the street on the Route Five.
But weren't a lot of the people volunteers?
Well, there's a combination of that, plus there was quite a bit of picking activity and just sort of, wasn't processing people as much as they were sort of stopped in the process. And that really created some, some backlogs. So, I think Rick's point is well taken, I'm not disputing that there's been increases. I think the question is, what's the trade-off? And again, it's the board's pleasure, Peter spends a lot of time down there. I don't spend as much time down there, but I certainly know that we have to staff certain places just because of, unfortunately, if there aren't eyes out and people wandering and making or challenging, we end up with all sorts of problems down there.
I think you better hit no up there, it wants to reboot.
Those are discretions, no. No is not a good time.
We got to run it now.
So, Peter, what's your take on that question?
I, you know, I hemmed and hawed about that, but, you know, having been down there, of course, they're short one man now anyway. So, what's happening is the two people that were running the garbage disposal, now one of them is generally running in to run the scales. The problem I have with that is that if you don't have two people on both sides of that rubbish disposal where money is being transferred, you know, or, or payment is being taken, somebody could just drive up, throw bags in there and drive off and you don't see anything happen, go away, because you only got one person. The one person on one side of that machine cannot see what's going on on the other side. And you're not going to want them walking around the other side to throw tickets in because then the line starts to form up. And I know the last couple of days, because of the holiday closure, when you get down there first thing in the morning, they were lined right up to the gate, both sides, right to the recycling. Recycling, you don't have to worry so much because you're not dealing with funds there or fine, making sure people are paying for the disposal. I mean, I make it a habit, if I don't see them throw a ticket at, I, you know, maybe they may get a little hot under the collar, but I always ask them, do you guys pay for that? The other problem is that we, a lot of people will come in and they drive right around and start throwing trash in the dumpsters. You don't know if they've been on the scale or what, so sometimes you have to run over there and ask them. Did you weigh, did you weigh this material or did you weigh the, you know? Some of them don't, they weigh and they drive off, so you have to, you're constantly on the watch down there, you know, there's no, you just can't turn your back, I hate to say it, but that's, that's how it works. I haven't been down there as long as I have working, it's, it's a turkey shoot.
You know, good, anyone. And the single stream recycling from, is that Casella, that's going to go up by, it looks by almost, you're going to double? Twenty-five thousand dollars to fifty?
Well, look at the actuals, which is really more realistic, we are just getting more and more materials. So, we really adjusted the budget to reflect the reality of what's coming through those dates.
So, that's, that fifty-six is what has been spent year to date or all of last year?
That was the prior year's actual. So, that was a real expense, just what we're saying once, for operation.
If you look at the financials when we get to them, you'll see that within seven months, we're, we're running ahead a little bit. So, I think within the next five months, by the time June thirtieth rolls around, you're going to find that you're going to be pretty much even with expenses versus what we expired. The only thing that's going to kill us is transportation, that's, I think it's like forty-five thousand in there where they're hauling the stuff away. And that's, that's, that's a problem. I don't know how you're going to cure that, you know, I mean, you have to pay, we've got to get rid of it, so.
If there's a big spike in expenses for fuel, there is a surcharge built into their contracts and they can, they can charge us more money.
I mean, Scott's making some inroads on the food scrap, so we found, we've got the handle on somebody else to take that, it's going to be less expensive, so.
Beautiful, that's good.
We probably aren't going to have to be charging for that, as we talked about, but.
That's great.
It's, you know, it's, you got, you can't, you know, you, if you're down there constantly for about a month, you know, that's when you got, you gotta walk, because that's when it gets crazy.
All right, one last question, I think, is the, Scott, you mentioned that workers comp, we've had some, really.
We've got large plans.
Start increasing the claims.
Right.
Now, is that reflected in this on page sixteen? Looks like a, it only increased like six thousand bucks from the actual.
No, it's in the highway department, I think.
They have a separate line for workers comp in the highway department?
Yes.
Yeah. Where is that?
It's in the benefit, the benefit section, I questioned that last night, because it's really up and, a big jump there because, you know, the accident too bad and stuff and, I don't know, it's a lack of training or Scott said they do it, but, you know, I don't know.
A couple of them have been just surgical and when you have people out on long-term surgeries like that, it's just, the numbers start to add up.
Oh, so it's not related to an injury that happened while they were working?
Oh, a repetitive motion, we've had some shoulders, we've had some other things, a couple more accidents, but most of it is related to more repetitive, repetitive motion. And when you have longer-term employees, unfortunately, that's part of the, that's, one of the downsides of the job is sometimes there are, there are injuries.
And is training the answer, do you think, Scott, or what would be the, or you think it's just the lack of the job, because whoever happens to get hurt, is there any?
We have all of the lifting assists and all of the right equipment for, for stuff. A couple of times, it's just been as simple as, you know, somebody was changing a plow and, you know, just wrenched their, wrenched their shoulder. Unfortunately, that's kind of what ends up.
I think he said, we've got a sort of an aging workforce and they're more inclined to wear, wear out something, you know, like.
That's true.
The other thing too, if they're in a hurry, you know, sometimes you don't think when you're hurt, that's when you get hurt.
Exactly, that's true. Okay, that's, those are all like, yep.
What else for?
Well, I just had a question on, or the finance, it didn't look like those wages went up. It's sixty last year, sixty this year, should there at least be a two percent increase on that one?
Well, there's been a little bit of a change because where we hired the current finance director and where the previous finance director was, there's been a little bit of a budget, so an adjustment for that, so I think overall we'll be okay with where we are.
And none of this includes the money for, for the solar array, right?
Yeah, we asked, I asked the auditor if I could do something with that and they said, really, it's not a good practice, they don't recommend it. So, when it comes, I'll, I'll let you know. If you wanted to put it in a specific place or a specific use, a designated use, right now it's, it's really just undesigned.
Right, so.
Target whatever you.
So, we're, so we're going to have, what was it, like fifty?
It's fifty, for the initial.
We're going to have fifty more than all the rest of the, for sure. Plus the FEMA money.
Right. The only other thing I wanted to point, point out to you is on the social services agencies, and I think it was more in the warning. You remember last year, there was a concern that the bike project number was, was wrong. They had asked for, their traditional ask was five thousand and the board had always satisfied that, but for some reason, it had been put in at twenty-five hundred. So, I adjusted that back to five thousand for this year. So, if you see that history and wonder what, what happened, it really isn't an increase, it was just a pairing of previous error.
And is the V and A number determined by how many, how much service is rendered or is that just an annual contract to make them available?
That's really an ask, they come to us with a, you know, it's a general support request. It's, it's so much larger than everyone but the C U sent it.
Okay.
Somebody else?
Expense websites for fifteen thousand, what is that, is that a, is that one time or is that? We're, we're still not sure yet on the new spectrum system, how much of that is going to be a ongoing expense? Because it's, a lot of it's related to volume and then how, how many transactions are processed for various events. So, really for us, it's, we've only had spectrics in place since November and since November, we've only had one small live event. So, we just extrapolated a number to see if it makes sense.
It's a one-line ticket.
Right, so I just don't know, Elijah, until we get a, get six months worth of use and a couple of, you know, significant live events to see how, how that's going to work.
Wasn't that purchase funded by the?
The initial investment was purchased through SVOG monies. Well, a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of theater operation was supported through SVOG, was not supported through taxes. Another seventy-two thousand next year will be supported through SVOG.
Wow, that's a leg.
It's keeping the theater viable at this point.
We've got a bigger bit coming in March, we hope.
Yeah, so let's keep our fingers crossed and hope that people will want to come out, you know, come out of their houses.
I just said, well, I mean, after we discuss it now or, or later, but when we go over the warning, but this truck, the dump truck.
Yes.
I mean, I know we took seventy-five thousand out of the equipment fund, I mean, I don't know, I, I just wonder if we should just put it in the regular budget? Because we kind of bonded for highway, I mean, we haven't put in a request for the voters for highway except for, always been just in the budget.
Right.
And then using some of the fund balance to cover balance of that, so at least, well, we'd have to, it would be a hundred fifty, really. I don't know what the board thinks about that, but, I mean, or if it's something that we think if it doesn't pass, we can find the money post FEMA, money coming in, you can purchase it another way.
My, my thought there, Sue, was if we go to the voters with that specific item and say, listen, this is part of what we do with our snow operations and if people feel that it's, you know, a burden on them, then I think if we fail in town meeting, then I think I would, when we get closer to that point in the spring, I would come back to the board and say, this is where we stand with our current operation. Here's where we are with FEMA, here's where we are with fund balance, and I'd make that recommendation. So, I think the board should make that decision. So, we would have a second chance, I think, to do something with that purchase.
So, you're saying that what she's suggesting is a good idea?
No.
No, she's saying, leave it the way it is on the, on the town meeting morning and let the voters decide whether they want to buy the truck or not.
Oh, okay.
Then if that fails, then we go to where, I'm going to find the money someplace either with a FEMA reimbursement or some other additional.
Yeah, I have that.
Yeah.
I think there's a second chance to go there.
I think, I think we should let it go to the voters.
Yeah, I mean, either way, it's going to hit, it's going to hit the taxes.
Yeah, yeah, because you look in between that and railroad station.
It's just as opposed to.
Two hundred twenty-five thousand, that's four cents on the tax rate, so. Well, fifty thousand, a penny, that's what it costs, so, it doesn't take long to add it up. So, that's why when you use your fund balance, you got to, that's where you're trying to figure out how desperate you are to pass those two articles and do you want to increase the, the use of the fund balance to three hundred, or leave it at two or one fifty or whatever. If those two articles pass and you're putting four and a half cents, four and a quarters, that's on the, four and a half after the four and a half onto the tax rate.
So, we will reformulate the tax rate depending on how the votes go?
Oh, yeah, those are, that's, that's good added to what we adopted tonight, so.
Yeah, I mean, because we don't set the tax rates from, but.
Yeah, because you don't know, you have to wait a lot of, all, all the articles pass or fail or whatever, then you, then you adjust the tax. You have to adapt the estimated tax rate, but that could change and people know that's been changed. If they don't vote for, you know, the, the truck or the railroad station, then what we've got on the paper will, will suffice for the tax rate. And we don't know where the schools come down, that's the state's deal, so.
And, you know, the grant list could change, there's a lot of factors on the actual tax.
Yeah. Okay, we all said we'd beaten up the budget. Okay, now let's look at the other three scenarios for the post-tax rate and then evolve how much money we want to spend out of the fund balance for, of the highway. And basically what we're doing is there would be offsetting the paving costs. If you go back to last year's town report, you'll see that's how we did it, we take, ask the voters to approve these a hundred thousand dollars fund balance to offset the paving. And then, then actually reduces tax rate, so.
And how, how, right now, our fund balance, our general fund balance is just pretty healthy. How confident are we, pose an audit that that's going to stay around that range?
Except for that other item that we talked about, everything else, I think, we're pretty confident. There aren't any surprises or other concerns.
But that other item is general fund or that hits the, it hits the highway fund balance?
That one's going to hit the, my understanding is it's going to hit the general fund.
Okay.
Yes, because it's currently proposed and again, I'm just waiting for the auditors to give us the okay before we do the transfers.
Yeah.
So, we're all with the, with the fund balance there.
We're at like.
The highway.
Highway is, well, it's only a FEMA money, that's.
Yeah, it'll be right up there, but we won't know if we're going to get that until, I'm just looking at the fund, fund balances.
So, you're back to that, you know, to the budget?
Because that's it, the highway fund is what, I guess?
Seven hundred and six roughly?
Nine ninety-eight?
Yeah, plus the kind of, that's right.
So, we could, we could take, you know, three hundred of that if we wanted to, that just reduced the tax rate further from that, three tenths of a cent. So, we could, we could take, you know, three hundred dollars out if we wanted to, that just reduced the tax rate further from that, three tenths of a cent. Or another two cents, it will be below, but then if those other articles pass, we're gonna be two cents to four, so.
But we don't have to take this out of, we can just take this out of the general fund balance, which is more, even though it might be used for paving, to reduce our tax rate, we could take it out of general.
Yeah, you could.
Well, I, I just worry about the highway fund, because until we get that five hundred thousand back, I mean, it's, the fund balance right now is down to almost three hundred thousand, and we have five months left to go, unless I'm reading that wrong, our current fund balance. Not, not the combination.
Well, that's actually a net add to the current, to the fund balance, so what I think what it's saying is that we're actually trending positively, if you look at the year-to-year numbers. Right, the previous year was seven oh six, and with the current year additional, we're up to actually nine ninety-eight when you look at the total.
That's the fund balance, that's not, not including what we haven't extended yet.
Right, that's just the snapshot according to the period seven budget status report, so not everything, right, is ultimately reflected there.
If you look at the general fund, they are like seven thirty-two, so.
Right.
Right.
So you got a couple hundred thousand dollars in the, in the other one.
You could take it, if you felt more comfortable, you could target it to the general fund if it's targeted by that three year.
Yeah, only cause I worry.
I understand the concern.
I worry about another five hundred thousand dollar event.
Yeah, I would hate to have a big spring rain and have to move out.
Yeah, it could easily happen, and we also, you know, I worry about depleting the highway fund too much, or to have, I mean, cause we've been lucky both with Irene and with this, that we've had money in that. To be able to wait for, for FEMA to, to pay off, which takes a good year, a year and a half.
It can take nine months to a year to get money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're, 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 you're trying to take the money out of, of general fund?
I think the general fund seems to be a little bit more, um, above the twenty percent that we want. I didn't do the calculations, but it looks like it's above the twenty percent.
I think it's still comfortably above.
Yeah.
So if the five hundred thousand comes from FEMA?
Well, then we're good.
What, will you put that back in the general fund, or?
No, go, go in the highway.
That'll go in the highway too.
Put it in the highway fund, but then you'd have a healthy balance to look at, a variety of other options, if you need to buy your truck, for example, you'd have more than enough money to do that. If there were other options that you wanted to pursue, you'd have the ability to use that money.
For the highway.
In that case, yeah, you specifically could do towards paving, could do lots of different options for that.
Good, you take it by the train station thing.
I think that'd be a stretch to take highway money out of a train station.
But I'm just trying to see how this works out.
I realize it's a stretch.
Well, I know, and I'm.
I would have to ask the auditors honestly for an opinion on that, I'm not so sure what, I, I, my guess is they wouldn't be real thrilled with that, but we could certainly ask if you would like me to.
So you can take money out of the general fund and give it to highway, but you can't go back everywhere, is that right?
Well, we're just using this to reduce our tax burden, I know, yeah, I understand, I'm just trying to understand these.
Highway funds are highway funds, general funds are general funds.
Highway funds have to stay in highway, like you can't, you know.
Like, you can't move it around, all right, that's, it's just, it's an important thing to understand, that.
Well, I understand. Now, now, how, how about the, um, the, the ARPA money, Scott, what is, what is the, I, I know we have, there's a, Gary later in the meeting, don't you have?
Right, we have a whole public process laid out for ARPA.
Right.
And so, I, I think, it's a little premature for us to target that for actual expenditure, I think it's probably gonna do something, once we're done with our prioritization and rankings, and it's gonna come back, I think, what is it, May, I think, to get reported back out to you. Really, that'll probably start driving your discussions for what projects you might wanna use that to offset for your next year's budget, that next. So it would give you some relief, because obviously, that will give you monies to do things that you might not have been able to do through taxes.
How about the bridge projects down here, would that, uh, ARPA money be, you know, for the?
They will not let us use the federal money to do a local share offset on federal projects.
All right.
They will not let us use the ARPA money to do a local offset for federal projects, so.
And one related question, the local agreement, is that where we offer a tax incentive to a local company, is that what that is?
No, that's, that's any of the, uh, tax abatements and stuff, you have to cover that, that's, anytime you get a tax payment, they're gonna make it up in, in the taxing, so that's where that comes in.
Okay, so we, so we, we will, we're projected to grant thirty-three thousand dollars in abatements?
I think that's our, we're pretty close to that, if we, we've already invited it anyway, so.
A lot of that is a veteran of it, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And again, those are just, you look at the historical, you know, you just sort of give it, it's not based on a real number, I couldn't tell you it's for, you know, thirty different things, or,
Yeah.
it's more based on the story.
Well, I mean, for me, I mean, if, if it doesn't, if it keeps us within that twenty percent that we need to keep, in our general fund balance, I would go for the two hundred thousand, only because, you know, people were, we lost a lot of staff, but we taxed people for the cost of those staff over the, over time, that money, I think, should go back to the taxpayers.
Well, I agree, it's, it's a different matter.
But if we stay within that safe fund balance.
Yeah, right. And then once our, our previous finance director's not costing us any more money, so the expense, that was a fairly well-paid position. So, uh, uh, we, we have a, a more junior person in that role now, does that save us some funds or not?
Well, she certainly is, you know, it's a different, right, she came in a different salary, so there is some offset there, who could?
Okay, one of my bad folks.
So let me, let me make sure I understand, I don't wanna be a secondhand in that, but I want to understand. So if we go for, uh, taking two hundred thousand from the fund balance, uh, does this include the train station and?
No, nothing to do with transit.
They'll still show up as an article.
Then they're still there, so we wouldn't be able to keep the tax rate as it says on the sheet we gave, if it would go up if those things are approved.
Right.
The thing about what's approved, there would be, there would be an increase.
It would be higher than this, okay.
But the more we keep it down, the more incentive there is for them to approve it.
Well, I got you.
So the trick is to get it down far, the, the tactic is not far enough, so that if they do pass, you, you're able to.
You're not, you're not.
Yeah, so that's why Sue was suggesting maybe three hundred thousand, if that's, it's gonna put too much with them. That would get us down a little further than that.
So we get two fifty?
Three tenths.
I mean, really, we should be between twenty and twenty-five percent of, I mean, the auditors, I don't know what your, the auditors are currently saying, twenty, twenty-five percent of operating. Well, they say three months now.
Twenty-five, twenty percent is the max that they recommend, ten percent is the minimum.
I thought there's a good thing that's funny, if we were running on money.
Right, so most of the time, if you're above twenty, they, they start to, they start to say, you really need to reduce your,
Yeah.
you're taking too much money, you need to spend it on a project, or, or reduce your tax rate for it.
Exactly, and the taxpayers have already paid that money, it's their money that we're holding on to, we should, we should get it back.
Yeah, so we just, I think that's.
Is it two fifty, or?
I, I think if they could calculate, I mean, it would be, I, I don't know, I didn't do the math on the fund balance to see which is the number, whether two hundred's fine, or two fifty pushes it close to that twenty percent, I don't know, um.
I can go back and do, I didn't do it off the top of my head, Sue, I, I don't wanna give you guys a number, we can do that.
But, and, and also, I don't wanna get too close to that either, because there's still some unknowns.
Right.
Um, until our audits complete, so I think even just leaving it at the two hundred thousand, which I think is.
You'll see a reduction, right, and, and it'll show up as a reduction at the two hundred.
And that's, that's a, that's a comfortable number, I think, with all of our unknowns, that's still.
I feel good about that, yes.
Yeah, okay, so I would stick with that, I think.
Okay, so. Just another question, and I don't know if this, you know, I might be thinking this is wrong, but, um, if, if we, the more of the fund balance that we put in to offset the tax, bring down the tax rate, next year, is that potentially gonna lead to a larger, you know, more distinct tax hike?
It could.
Well, the balance to that, a lot of times, Elijah, is our long-term debt, and that's really what we try to balance, and I think, part of the conversations that I've been trying to have with the fire departments is they have some large expenses, some of our debt is, is falling off, but they are, are looking at, acquisition of equipment and potentially, you know, some other things, and when you start to look at that, that's where the, you know, the balancing occurs. You know, one of these pump trucks is four or five hundred thousand dollars, just for example, so. I think that's where the board and, and I think the conversations with these, as we go through the fire equipment committee process, and we start looking at, major investments in, in fire services, I think that's gonna be part of that conversation, cause that does have an impact on, you know, you can't, doesn't smooth your tax rate, it ends up creating these larger jumps.
Can that ARPA money be used for, Scott?
ARPA's really targeted not so much to that. It, it isn't in terms of if I wanted to give all the firefighters a bonus, they can do that, I've seen that, but, you know.
Can't buy a truck though, huh?
But they don't want you to buy a truck, I could buy filters, or P P E, or those types of things, it's, it's very targeted.
But yeah, that is, that is a problem, I mean, that's why we usually be fairly careful with keeping the fund balance.
Right.
But I think it's because we've had this, I mean, people have seen the reduction in the staff, but they're not seeing the reduction of expenses in their tax risk.
Yeah.
So, I, I think we need to kind of balance that out.
And some of that offset is too, you've invested a lot more money paying.
Yes.
And I think to be fair, when somebody criticizes the board, I think that's one of the responses that I would, would say to people is, we historically spent, what, four hundred, three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand dollars a year roughly, in paving. And now we've increased that the last three years to seven hundred, and then last year, I think we spent almost seven fifty, and I think this next budget year, proposing eight fifty. So, and, and every time I pave a road, I, people are happy, so, I mean, so there's a flip to that, you know, to that.
That's, that's the most expensive thing we do.
What we do, the town is administrated, is, is paying for, is bringing the money in to do the, do the paving, basically, that's it. I mean, other town, that's not the only thing, economic, economic.
No, it's definitely a big number.
Yeah, believable.
Yeah.
But they should understand why, they say, sprawling out from the city center is not necessarily good for your, for the town.
Highways are expensive, they're expensive to build and they're expensive to maintain, it's just, you know.
And then when it rains too hard, they fall apart.
Well, that's a whole nother discussion.
Okay, so where are we going with this, folks?
Do we need a motion, or are we ready to make a motion?
We don't need a motion, we're just gonna give Scott.
We just gotta give you some sense, because I have to do, right now, the warning's in draft, but it's your next meeting where you gotta adopt it, so I just wanna get a sense of where the board is, so I can finalize it, put it into a, a format, and then we'll adopt it at your January sixteenth meeting.
Sue, Susan's made a very good case for it.
Yeah, I mean, I think if, but only if those numbers make sense, if, if it's getting us too close up to the edge, it makes me nervous, so.
What, what, what do you call the edge, where do you wanna keep it?
I wanna make sure it's.
I'll run the ratios.
Twenty or even higher, just because we have these unanswered questions.
I'll have the ratios for you guys, so that you can see it where we are with the percentages. If you wanna take the two hundred thousand as a proposal out of the general fund fund balance.
Otherwise, then I would go down to the one fifty, that, if it's getting uncomfortable, I would go down to one fifty.
That sounds good to me.
Okay.
I think it really like sounds.
Okay, I'm all updated for that.
Okay.
And then the other thing is on the warning itself, and again, this is a draft, cause I know, there's some typos, Peter pointed out to me, I've gotta, I've gotta clean up a few things. But the one thing was that I didn't do, and, and wanted to bring the board's attention, is the, the question of the cannabis, uh, article. And it's more a question of, the language is somewhat, you know, straight from the B L C T, so, that doesn't really change, it's a question of, where do we want? We want it as an article before we get into the, some people have put it at the beginning of their articles, you know, before they get into the financial articles, other people have put it at the end, when they're done with all of the specific articles that have expenditures, so in this case, that's article, go all the way down to article fourteen, I just don't know where you want it, so.
I kinda think it should be first, because, uh, I think there's probably a lot of people that don't wanna wrack their brains on this budget stuff, but really would like to, participate in, in discussion about cannabis, so it might be helpful to the public to have it first.
If it's first, it certainly has a different impact, obviously, than if it's at the end of.
Some people might say, oh, they voted that in, well, I have gone to bed, I, I've been so long talking about that, I've been so.
I would say five.
I would just say, you wanna sneak it in between where five is and.
Yeah, cause the first one, we don't.
So the new article five would be the cannabis article, right, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
So are we gonna put two articles in there, one for the?
So that was my second question.
Integrated, or one for the retail, or, or just move along?
Well, I spent some time on the phone with B L C T this afternoon, and they, uh, this guy, said that the complexity of, the, getting yourself licenses of integrated operation, involves state bureaucracy that's not yet clearly established, and cannabis sales could begin next May, uh, next, uh, yeah. But that C C B is still making rules and defining things, he suggested that the first one is the simplest and will, and will confuse people the least. And, um, and, and there's, he said, if you're trying to keep the corporate, corporados from taking over the market, the second one doesn't do that.
It hasn't?
No. That's what he said. Because it's so hard, like, if a mom and pop wanna open a store here, getting themselves certified as integrated can take months, and, they don't even know how that process is, is gonna work yet, and that, in the meantime, nothing, they couldn't, nothing could happen. But I, I, his recommendation was to do the simple one, the first one shall, the town allow for cannabis retail.
But I, I thought you could.
You can do both.
You could do both, and if, if, if the second one is integrated, it's sort of down. According to that guy that I was talking to in Jamaica.
Yeah.
That kind of protects the, the local grower, the local person, so if you put it on there, and people say, no, gee.
I see, okay, so we can, we can have both, you think having both will confuse people?
I think so, it, it probably will, unless.
It's hard to explain, it's not, it's not, it's not real smooth on the explanation.
No.
I think people are gonna say, what the hell's that?
Right.
Yeah, what's the difference between the two, and then you got kind of.
Cause my neighbor gonna put, you know, a greenhouse full of cannabis up on his property, you know, and call himself an integrated grower, so I think it's people nervous sometimes.
That's what this guy, B L C T said, he said that, that, and also, you, you're not sure with the second one, because they haven't established all the protocols for what, for defining.
Exactly what it would make grow, is.
Then that could, could be months before, or who knows when they would get around to defining it, so my, my suggestion is that we do the simple first one.
So did you ask him what hap, or we say yes to the first one? What's the licensing process, I mean, or they, they haven't set that up yet, right?
They apply, the individuals apply, or people who wanna open this apply to the C C B, they have to be approved by the C C B before they can open in our town.
But they don't have to have an integrated, like?
No.
I think the integrated portion, as Rick is discussing, is gonna throw time and get more detailed and probably, you're not gonna miss, if you wait and do it on another annual meeting, I don't think there's any real significance to that.
You, you think you're gonna get a second chance at that issue?
Oh, sure, yeah, absolutely.
You could go on the integrated later.
Yes.
And the tax question, there's, there's, I talked to, um, Jeanette White, and the House, there's someone named Jan, it's Anne, Jan Ansel, who's the Speaker of the House, she's the one who insists that all the money go to the state. The Senate wants to split it more equitably, and most of the rest of the House, that, this woman's chair, the Ways and Means Committee, just said that she wants all the money to go to the state, and that's what happened. Now they're trying to fix it, whether they'll get around to that this, this season or not, in this session, is a good question. But I would, I would like, cause Peter's brought up the question, what's in it for the town, but answer it. Really, the point, it's unclear until this bill is considered, how much we'll get. Right now, we just get, what, a hundred dollar licensing piece, that?
Yeah, up to a hundred.
So I think people will probably wanna ask that question when the, uh, when it's, when it's discussed, uh, and it's gonna, the decision will be made by Australian ballot the next day. It has to be done by Australian ballot.
Yeah.
The law says.
Okay. So if we, if we put it on the wire and, and it's voted yes, uh, except with, by the voters. Then, then where, where are we? And we're just still waiting for them to determine the licensing procedure?
They have to have that squared away, um, I think it's.
By July, I believe.
Yeah, that's what, what, yeah. The, the state, the CCB has to have issue, has to begin issuing the licenses because a lot of towns approved it last March.
Uh huh. Somebody in the waiting room. Alyssa's.
I think it's Alyssa.
Yeah. All right. So I'd say we put the first option in this, in the file.
So we'll redraft this from article five.
And then should article six mention the library? Not clear what that is.
Yeah. Yeah, you have to, uh.
Yeah.
Just put that to the, to fund the library. When we go down to article twelve. What that indicates to me is that we're going to vote whether we want to vote Australian ballot again for all articles. I, I can also want to do what Athens did. Everything but the budget is voted Australian, the budget is there because if they want to change anything on the budget, we got to vote it down. But we got to go through the whole process again and have another vote. Just the budget. So I don't know if we want to reword that article to read that, you know, that we adopt the budget at town meeting and all other articles are by Australian ballot. And that, you know, includes officers and, you know, the board members, if they get elected by Australian ballot. The only thing that gets adopted at the town meeting the day before the vote would be the budget, like it was before.
That's what it used to be, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you also.
Because right now if there's anything, if somebody is mad at the Y and J because the building's gone and they want to cut that, then too bad. It's in there, you can't cut it, you can't, you've got to vote the budget down to change it.
Yeah, yeah, that's crazy.
You know, so.
So are you saying for eleven and twelve feet or just twelve?
What's that? Uh, um. Yeah, twelve.
Because the, the library then would be Australian ballot, but then the, the town would be town meeting.
Right. So I don't know how we want to, we might want to word that, who's going to like this.
That's, uh, this year, they're talking about next year.
For next year. The, um.
We didn't vote on that last year or something?
We voted to vote everything Australian ballot.
Right.
So that's probably going to be the issue. If we vote.
You have the option to continue on this year to continue it into next year and you can rescind it if we're into.
So then if you.
So that's COVID vote.
So, you know, go this year, adopt it, the, the town budget and town meetings, then next year, the ones that affect this year will put all the votes next year. So.
But this year's vote is not Australian.
Right. It's Australian ballot.
It is Australian ballot. There's still a COVID.
It's a rule that they made when you sponsored.
Right. Yeah. But I, I didn't, I guess I was, I thought we had voted to change it last year officially, but we didn't.
We voted change it to Australian ballot, everything.
This is just a continuation of that.
Well, this year we're just trying to, I, I just suggest when we, we break, we break the town budget out and everything else is on.
So for twenty-four, if I want to change this, then we're going to say for twenty-four, we're just going to do adopt the budget at town meeting and anything else by Australian ballot.
Right.
The BCLT guy I was talking to, they said, and I wasn't paying attention because I was talking to cannabis, but he said the Senate voted today, something to do with Australian ballots for the towns. He said something is going to change as we're voting today. I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention. I'm sorry, I'm so vague.
I think they, they were giving a lot of people the ability to move town meetings in March to, like they did last year, remember that?
And mailing ballots is another thing they execute to, 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 to press the balance. Sorry, I'm so vague, but I'm, Laura, I played that somewhere. Get plenty of talk about it.
Okay. Let's move right now. Well, I will change that letter. I just, I got the report, I'll, I'll report the board, I'll just bring that around to just kick off the highway portion of the, of, on, on, maybe using the fund balance. I'll just take it up, just, just leave it as fund balance. Everybody all set with that?
Yeah.
Report.
Yeah.
This is what you, you wrote to the, for all the support reports.
Yeah.
I was wondering if we could, uh, begin with a little positive like stuff we've accomplished.
Well, what's in there?
Something like that. The solar field, is that in there?
I didn't bring up the solar field. I didn't put that in there, but.
I think it's a pretty significant accomplishment. You know, it was recommended by the Conservation Commission, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's, you know, fifty thousand bucks.
But in there, it's part of the draft.
What do you got?
Yeah, I think it's fine to put it.
I mean, you know.
And then the, um, the other stuff about the, maybe we didn't mention the names of our new, well, the new finance person, our new.
Sorry, that's in there.
You, you're in there?
Yeah.
Good. All right.
And maybe say something about, uh, you know, having reached a decision to go ahead with the off alignment, because which may be going to have major impact on the people, on Jesus.
Start saving in pennies.
Yeah, I'll put that in there. Yeah. Maybe we got to wait until Scott said the closer we get to, because it's new, we put it in at that point.
He would be out of office by then.
Okay. So I'll, I'll, I'll change that and send out another edition. So, so we'll have it ready for our meeting on the eighteenth. Okay. We've gone over the draft warning. So let's go to the grant proposal for underrepresented communities. Mr. Fox, I guess you can take the lead on this one.
Actually, uh, well, the law is that, um, the Star Federation coordinator.
Excuse me, Walt, I mean that, uh, I found you by leaving the house.
I'm going to pass this around.
Good place to sit.
We have new technology since your last year worked. He's one of the ones, Allo will automatically capture your.
They're hooting at us all.
We have the technology not available before. I don't know if it's better, but it's here.
Well, thank you very much for wanting me this opportunity. Can you hear me with my mask on?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'll try to boom in, in an FM voice. This is a grant opportunity that has been made available to CLG, uh, uh, towns and cities and municipalities all over the country. Uh, it's specifically geared for helping to support, uh, National Registry nominations for sites, historic sites related to underrepresented communities such as African-American communities and indigenous peoples' communities, Native American communities. There have been some, uh, conversations over time about the so-called Petroglyph site um, in, in how it sits on the National Registry. Conversations within the Abenaki community, conversations, uh, with the Historic Preservation Commission. And in more recent times, conversations between the two entities, between the town and the Abenaki. There is some interest at this point on the part of the State Historic Preservation Office. In fact, we've been very supportive in helping us move this proposal along to, uh, make an ask on, on, and, and just submit a proposal uh, to get the funding so that we can review and update the current, uh, National Registry, um, posting that we have for the Petroglyph site, which currently is in this kind of very odd place. It's not really, it's on the, the National Registry by way of being a contributing site uh, for a multi-purpose, uh, area that the National Park Service no longer recognizes as a, uh, good way to present historic sites for the National Registry. This will give us an opportunity to clarify and to set, uh, the record straight as to where it sits on the National Registry and bring in, uh, the native voice, if you will, indigenous voice to, uh, help us better interpret and understand the context of the landscape of, uh, the petroglyphs, what they represent. Not as simply a, uh, curiosity, which is kind of presented right now with the National Registry, but to put it into much larger, uh, context, much larger landscape. We now know, for example, from the time when the original National Registry nomination was made back in nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety, that, uh, much of the focus was specifically on the, uh, carvings here in Bellas Falls, just below the Villas Bridge. However, subsequently research has discovered that it's actually part of a much larger landscape, goes beyond that simple space. And so this will give us an opportunity to, um, rewrite that nomination so that we can capture the fullness of that historic landscape. What I presented, what I hope folks may have had a chance, uh, to look at is in, uh, your packet, you had some information outlined in, uh, a simple summary where I've taken the various elements of the narrative that's in the, uh, draft proposal to give you a good snapshot. I think it's a good snapshot of what the, uh, proposal is about and where it's going. Uh, it's also information about the, uh, grant program itself from the National Park Service. And hot off the press this, this afternoon, I started, uh, working up the, uh, preliminary budget, which I hope was circulated a bit earlier, uh, by hand this evening to lay out. We're looking for a grant that we have a, uh, major, uh, that will have a bottom line ultimately of about forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Thirty-eight, six of that comes from the grant. The other six thousand dollars is a match cost share that is based on the, uh, volunteer services of a number of people who would be engaged in the project, uh, that we would not have to involve. Either the town pay or with the. So that's kind of an overview. Thoughts, questions, concerns, hopefully no complaints.
The, um, the final result of this.
Yep.
Is going to be a written document?
Yes, yes. The, uh, the, the project is projected to be a twenty-four month long project that will, uh, engage two program coordinators who would, uh, be, uh, a historian and an archaeologist who would spend time in the course of probably eighteen months of that twenty-four month period, sifting through existing research, exploring new avenues of research, and at the end to, uh, develop a new National Registry nomination. The end product and the purpose of, uh, for the, uh, grant from NPS point of view, the end product is a new nomination or an amended nomination. We'll link that determination as the project goes along. Do you amend what we currently have or do we come up with a whole new one?
Um, I just, I think it sounds like a very worthwhile endeavor. What is, what advantage do we have by getting this amended or, or revised? Does that affect other potential grants we might? Cause this is, this doesn't do anything to cut down the bushes, that obscure, that, that doesn't do anything like that.
Right.
But if we do this, will that put us in a better position to get assistance for actually doing something with the site?
Well, I think what it does is it does honor, uh, some of the objectives, some of the goals, uh, that, uh, that have been articulated in things like the Bellas Falls Island Improvement Plan from twenty thirteen from the town plan that takes reference to, to development of, uh, of greater awareness, engagement educationally and culturally. And I think it all, so from that point of view, I think it does contribute to, if you will, the awareness and the potential for, um, helping to better understand and need to attract people to, uh, very interesting, I think is, I've come to understand this very interesting, uh, landscape, uh, with the heart and mind of the Abenaki community. I think it also really brings together communities that I think have had conversations. But I think, um, just in the last few months, I have a sense that there's been more of a, um, uh, of a conversation to talk about a sense of place between, uh, the indigenous community and the Euro-American community here. I know there's some interest on the part of the Trails Committee, for example, uh, to have a greater awareness and to look at the Petroglyph site.
Well, I think any, anything we can do that would make us more advantageous employees to get some funding from some other source, any source anywhere, uh, to do something, uh, I think, and you know, I'm involved deeply with the historical society, so this is part of that, you know?
Yeah. Uh, and I, I think it goes beyond just, um, you know, getting, getting funding to do something with the site. I mean, it really, I think any, anything that we consider with that has to be not so much in terms of just improving as a tourist site, but as recognizing it as something that's important to the indigenous community, you know, really, um, not just, you know, developing it as, you know, to be more accessible necessarily, but it's more about what the indigenous community wants to do with the site. And it seems like from what I'm seeing here, that this would be a better written narrative of the, um, indigenous involvement in the Great Falls area than what we've had previously.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Uh.
I think it seems like a good, a first step.
We don't know why or who, but whatever, that's, that's probably correct.
First step and better, um, you know, better representation, you know, of that.
How, how will?
That community that's still, that's still alive, you know?
How will we select the people who represent the, the indigenous community? I mean, it's, it's coverage also to all these different folks out there. Is there a process by which, I mean, someone who will speak for Rockingham or some Rockham's indigenous population will we speak for the whole, within county towns?
The intention, and this is why it's a twenty-four month period of time, and as we want to make sure there's been sufficient, uh, uh, time to engage Abenaki tribes and bands, not only in our community, but in, but in the region as well. And to try to bring and foster a conversation and to capture, there's a whole oral history element, for example, to this where uh, the way that the project is, uh, perfectly conceived in mission of architecture such that Rich Rollshu, Gail Goel, the, the co-manager, we, we, our firm administrator, gives, uh, interim reports and, uh, the interface with the National Park Service and the shipload. But those two folks are, would be committed to work within just not the Elman tribe, but also to outreach to the other tribes and bands, not only in Vermont, but also in the nation. I think that one of the, the current narrative is that if you're the petroglyphs, they're in Vermont, they're interested. Very I-it kind of a relationship, but those with I-is our relationship, I think is what the rich, they've mentioned in one of our meetings. I can give a shout out soon, just so that folks are aware. This is something that I'd certainly been getting a regular support from Gary on. It's coming out of our office, but the, the group, uh, that came together to put this, uh, grant together includes Rich Rollshu, Gail Goel, Diana Jones, who's now a commissioner, um, for the, on, on HPC, um, and that Spalding. In fact, and that Spalding is one of the people I think who would be doing some of, uh, underwater archaeology to help support. And that's part of matches, her, uh, volunteer in that time. And also, uh, Chief Roger Longtoe and Linda Longtoe. Uh, we did have one major meeting and then we've been working up new workspaces and telephone conversations. But over the past three weeks, four weeks, we've been working on this project. But over the past three weeks, four weeks, we've been working on this project. It's really kind of a collective effort with folks who are prepared and see the absolute critical need to reach out to a much larger community.
And to follow up on Bonnie's question, this will have no impact on the accessibility of the site to the public?
Correct.
It's just, it's gonna, gonna be a written document, an expanded exploration
Correct.
of, you know, the cultural significance of this field, and that's it.
But all of that can be used by others to create educational thing, could do a, I mean, and again, it would be up to the indigenous community because they want to protect that site as well.
Right, they don't necessarily want.
How they want to have it, it's given them how that should be used, not plugged up.
So you would be developing what would, what would turn out to be a research paper, basically, right?
Yeah, that's what, a well-done National Registry, the National Historic Registry nomination document is currently conceived, is really a research document, much more than what they have in the past. Which is one of the challenges right now, the way the SHPO, the way that the Mont State Office, Historic Preservation Office, the way that they look at it is that, well, it has a place in the National Registry, but not really, it's kind of a contributing site here, but it's not really, it does not represent the fullness of what the place is for, from a historical, from a archaeological community as well.
It seems like it's a very worthwhile thing to do for many, many reasons. It's something that textbooks could refer to and so on. And the reach of this could be quite, quite extensive, right?
That's, I think, I, I do believe that, that one of the outcomes, I mean, there's a product that we have to show the National Park Service, say, here's the nomination document, the nomination document that we've written, pulled together by Rich and by Gale, and then with a final sign-off by a qualified archaeologist as part of the process. But I think that one of the things that, what's happening here is that over the next two years, should this be funded, let's start July first of 2022, if it's funded, that will help nurture relationships between, between the Historic Preservation Commission, and therefore, I think, the town, and the Abenaki community, cultivating dialogue so that one of the end products may very well be a moment of the community coming together. I know that Peter Bergstrom, for example, I've heard express an interest and a need for greater awareness and sense within the community for both the Abenaki and the Euro-American community to come together and have a better understanding of each other. I think that will be one of the.
Yeah, it's, it seems like it's as much about not just history, as in people from the past, but it's also about the living community and, you know, better acknowledgement and representation of that community that's, you know, hasn't gone anywhere, you know, they're still here. They've been, you know, they've been through a lot, I mean, a lot of abuse, you know, but, so, a little bit of a step towards, you know, some, you know, reconciliation, you know.
Would, would, is that correct? I mean, this is for historical relevancy, so, for these kind of subjects that Elaja is, is talking about? Would that be included in your focus?
Yeah, I, I think that, that, that one of the outcomes will be a much fuller awareness and just raising the petroglyph, an understanding of the importance of the space, which is one of the reasons, and I want to say that Abenaki is not my native tongue, but it is the Ktzi Ponjilkuk, it's a whole landscape, it's an entire place of the Great Falls. It was a place to come to fish, to hunt for habitation, there are numerous burial sites. But it's just, and that's the, and that's the thing, it's just not the petroglyphs, it's this larger space than the sacred space within the indigenous community. But this is bringing that out, that would be reflected in the nomination form with the National Registry, I believe. It would also, I think, then, we'll filter down, become part of a conversation with the community.
Does Great River, I'm sorry, Walter, does, does Great River Hydro have any stake? It literally owns that, that land, is that, is that, is it state property, is it Great River Hydro?
It's very interesting. According to the town, according to the land records, the town land records, Great Falls Hydro is in fact the keeper of the land. They, they do own the land, but they really don't its own, I think, this is something, it's Congress, I had a meeting yesterday with folks from Great River. Because in order for this to move forward, because, because the petroglyphs will be referenced in, in the National Registry, we have to have the land owner's permission to make that, you know, to, to, to put that information on the National Registry. So we are in the process, and hopefully we'll get that letter of consent by Monday. The grant is due Tuesday. We're pulling together lots of consent letters and support letters. Great River Hydro has been very supportive, I think, with underwriting concepts. Having some concerns about where this might be, but the thing I haven't convinced is, I think, everyone's interested.
So, so what do you need from us? They need a motion to apply for the grant?
Um, I think that that would be in order.
Okay, and the manager signs any appropriate documents?
Sorry?
The manager signs any appropriate documents?
Uh, not to my knowledge. No, what I would ask for is, is a letter to memorialize the support of the part of the town for the endorsement for the application.
You don't have any appropriation specifically here, Peter, so it's really more just an endorsement of the grant.
Okay, so you're just, you need to board consent to.
Consent to follow up.
Is that the consent to the board?
And, Ben, I just want to be clear, would you write a letter of support? Do you need a letter of support from us that we could get by the text card in or not?
I think that that would be good to have. We do, there's an attachment section, they're getting a letter from the Vermont State Historic Preservation Office, signed off by the State Historic Preservation Officer Laura Trishman, Jess Robinson, State Archaeologist, as well as Devin Coleman, State Architectural Historian. They've been very supportive to helping define just what the grant is all about. So they have submitted a letter, we didn't a letter, I believe, from New Hampshire, state of, State Historic Preservation Office, that's the process. We have a letter from the Bellas Falls Historical Society. Would, if some of this research unfold because of the proximity of some of their land to the petroglyphs, that you may end up, there is some evidence that it is an important part, so we have a letter of consent. And then a letter, I think, from the town.
Okay, then, we'll go ahead with that, we'll report consensus to send a letter of support for the, the grant.
Gary has something.
Gary?
Yeah, I just want to say, we do hear clearly all of your input and interest. And as Walter's working on this project, if there's, let's say around the petroglyphs, there's improvements or protections that the indigenous, that the Abenaki would like, they're not a federally recognized tribe, so they're not eligible to apply for the, there's a lot of federal funds available for this type of thing. But Walter would be able to access funds that they can't because they're, they're not federally recognized, they're local, they're regional. And so in terms of funds to do things with that, that would be, well, there were a couple of years down the road, the plan, Walter referred to some aspects of the Iron Grove Plan. There's also in the area-wide plan, public input to have some type of Abenaki cultural center, things that honor them or walks around the island. And really important, as you folks are saying, to have an accurate narrative to tell. And what we have right now is a lot of anecdotal, non-acrobatic information. So in many ways, this is really important and will lead to further access to funds and development way down the road. Although, the, the more important piece, as Walter was pointing out, and Elaja also, is that relationship building and honoring the culture and.
Well, this seems like the first step in, in all of that. We like to keep building and honoring, honoring the site in the, in the region, it's like step number one.
Okay.
All right.
Let's move on to.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Walter, for coming in.
If you don't mind, I'm just go back up and get back to the grant.
All right. Let's go to article, item number five, which is the ARPA public input process. There's a sheet in your packet describing those steps.
So it was pretty obvious in the variety of different federal guidance that we've received, that they really wanted a robust public process before any ARPA money was spent. So Gary reached out, we did some interviews, and came up with a term to help us with a process. And so once we had put that together, we went through and looked at calendars and tried to come up with a, just an overall way to try to engage the public, get a, get a sense of what projects or priorities that might be floating around that potentially we're not aware of, just because sometimes we're in our own little bubble and we don't always get the full impact of maybe what other people are thinking or feeling. So this would be a chance to reach out to some folks and try to get as wide a net possible for these monies. And then the goal here is to then work with the board and, and also through the joint work process, to just come up with a whole host of items, proposals, recommendations, and then ultimately, it's, it's up to the board in terms of spending and priorities. But I think it's a good, it'll meet the requirements for sure of the ARPA process, but I also think it's a good way for us to engage the larger public and really get a sense of where other people are in relationship to things that might be important that we're not considering. So this is, again, this is the schedule that we sort of put together. We looked at times and tried to figure out ways that are, you know, it's hard to, especially younger families, you know, the dinner hour can be difficult, asking people to come and do public participation. If you remember, when you have school-aged children, that, you know, those golden hours between the beginning of school and bedtime are jam-packed for parents. It's not, it's not a great time. So we tried to make some accommodation for that by trying to offer some food, so at least maybe there's an incentive for people to come and try to participate and, you know, reach the audience that maybe we miss a lot of times because they're just involved in daily activities. So that was the idea of trying to offer some food, a couple of these public engagement sessions.
Yeah. Could I suggest that we add Main Street Arts to the group of organizations that in, in this area?
Absolutely.
He played in Saks Reserve.
So I guess the goal tonight really was twofold, to bring this to the board's attention, to take a look at your own calendars and relationship to conflicts or concerns that you might have. And, and, you know, we're trying to schedule dates, we've already got a date in February for a public input meeting on the cannabis article. This has additional public information meetings, so we're trying to schedule as well somewhat in that time period. So I just want to make sure that the board is on board and, you know, ready to engage in the process. And if there's any other questions or concerns, we go forward. But this at least gets us to the point where we have a pretty good process and a set of recommendations that we presented, and then ultimately, at our joint board meeting in May, we'll at least then have a, a document and a process that we can show as we go forward with real prioritization on, on actual spending, which is one of the things that we'll then look at if we develop the next round of projects.
Scott, question, who will publicize? Will, will, will Camoyan Associates be doing the publicity just to get, make people aware of the opportunity to present, to participate? How, how will we market it, as it were?
So, so that'll be a joint process with, with the town and Camoyan. They, they do have a public engagement staff, people who, that's their expertise. So they'll be dedicating two staff, one who's more economic development and facilitation oriented, or, or project oriented, I should say. And the other staff is public engagement specialists, good, good with working with large groups and making the process fun and engaging, and, and the outreach. You know, come up with outreach together and do that as robustly as we can with websites and fan flights and fat TV and wall radio and library, fireplace, town hall, back in everywhere that we can outreach, merchants, fifth and a chamber.
And will there be a budget, what, what's going to fund this? Is it a town?
Yes. We're going to fund it through just the general operating budget, we have some professional development funds, some other funds. So I think the goal here was to try to get this to the board so that we have enough time to, you have to spend the monies, I believe, the most recent, what is twenty-four, I think it's the end of the fiscal year of twenty-four. So we're on a good cycle and relationship to developing this list, working through the concerns or project costs of items, and then coming up with ways that we want to then go forward to then hopefully use the, the money in the most beneficial way possible, you know, so I think that's really the goal there. And I think that was the goal of why they were pushing on the federal level to do as much public outreach and really document what you're doing. So I think this process will definitely keep us in good graces and, and that, in terms of what the federal requirements are.
Okay, now, go on to a final item on the agenda, and it's the financials in your packet. Any questions, Scott? Doesn't look like anything standing up, any other than what we've already discussed.
Yeah, I was just, I think it seemed a question mark, but, you know, hopefully some.
Yeah, I'll share those project worksheets with everyone once we get, you know, that, that next round. So just so you get a sense of what we're looking at in terms of the reimbursement, because those are fairly large numbers.
And then things are, we're, we're good with the auditor and getting everything back on track?
Talked to them this week, and, yeah, so I really told her that I'd like to have their drafts done by the end of January, which gives me time then to fold it into the draft of the town report and then have a meeting with the audit committee and still then have time to have our meeting for the informational meeting in February, which is, I think, right now, the twenty eighth. So when I talked to them this week, they said that they should be able to meet that schedule. So I feel pretty good that we don't have to rush like we had last year where audits are hot off the copy, or on the night of the informational meeting.
Oh, I know, we don't have any heat, might be nice to have them hot off the. They can sit on it, you know. They were.
I got your shirt.
Yeah. So you think we are going to have some semblance of an audit, probably?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Good. All right, we are now, there's an order of warrants here to approve, so we can move along to the items for January eighteenth. It says sixteen, but it's the eighteenth.
Go ahead, you're on date.
Now, if you want to wait on Saturday, that's fine. Okay. Uh, we've got a couple of days for that, so if anybody thinks anything, I know it'll be the budget adoption.
For sure, we'll have the, the warning, which we'll have to adopt.
In the warning, cap rate, et cetera, the three items that we've got on here. Whatever else that the Wanderer's way onto the agenda. And the joint board is not until March, so. And the joint board is not until March, so.
Right.
Depending on who's still around at the table, we'll worry about that. Other business. Uh, Gary, too.
Yeah, so the Vermont Community Development Program has a new, um, form and requirements for municipal policies and codes, MP one form, which we approved a little over a year ago. Or we have a light up Bellas Falls and Town Facilities grant, keep trying to requisition the funds. So, um, we need to update those forms and submit them, uh, the, uh, so that's, uh, so it's just, we'll have the, um, uh, the manual available of the financial policies and, uh, and a resolution, uh, that, that the, the manager, the, the finance director and select board are aware of and familiar with those, uh, policies and procedures for that.
Are you going to bring that to the next board or?
For, for the eighteenth, yes, for the, uh, January eighteenth.
Hey, other business, let's start with Rick.
Nothing.
Almost it.
Nope, nope.
Gee, this is great. No need for the executive section, so I guess I'll take, um, uh, one other thing I will bring up. I do have a letter from Paul Bohosty announcing his resignation effective August twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, but we haven't got that time, but it's officially down in paper, so.
Tried to talk him out of it.
It didn't work.
It was not successful.
I saw a horse call.
Exactly. Yes, I think a lot of things are going.
Uh, that being said, uh, I'll take motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Thank you.
We'll be saying second to adjourn, all of the favors say aye?
Aye.